The Chair has determined that the warrant for this meeting has been duly posted. As there is no quorum requirement for the annual Fall Town Meeting and the Town Clerk is present to make record of the proceedings, the Chair calls to order the 2019 Fall Town Meeting at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being broadcast live on the Groton Channel. It is also being videotaped for rebroadcast and posting on the Internet. In addition, it is being audiotaped for record-keeping purposes. Voters may sit in any available seat except for the last two rows. Those are reserved for guests and non-voters, who are asked to remain quiet during the proceedings and silent during voting. If a voter wishes to address the meeting, please proceed to the nearest microphone and wait to be called on by the Chair. While it is not a legal requirement, you may, if you wish, provide your name and address. There are some things you can do as a voter to help the Chair. Please be sure you have your voter card, because tonight is the color green. Do not lose it if the Chair is uncertain on a voice vote. We will vote by raising the cards. If a count of the votes is needed, only voters with a card will be counted. Please be sure you have the informational packet and other materials from the table in the hallway. This contains the main motions to be made tonight and is an important reference tool. Please note that there were some changes to the Town Manager's report after it had gone to print in the Town Warrant, largely dealing with Article 2. Please take this time to silence your electronic devices. There are two updates on previous Town Meeting votes. The revisions to the Groton Charter which were approved by the Town of Groton on April 2017 at the Town Meeting and revised in April 2018 at Town Meeting have passed the Senate. They did so on July 11th, and they are now in the House of Representatives where they've been ordered for a third reading. This is a step that is close to the final vote in the House. After that, it would proceed to the Governor's Desk for his signature. On April 30th, 2018, the Town Meeting approved funding for the new senior center. With an update on that project, Mr. Peter Cunningham for the Council on Aging.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to announce to Town Meeting that the dedication ceremony for the new Groton Center is going to be Saturday, November 2nd, and there's going to be a formal dedication ceremony occurring at 1:00, and then afterward, before, there's going to be an open house. If folks are interested in attending the dedication ceremony, we would request that you call the Groton Center at 448-1170 just to reserve a seat, because we need to try to get a headcount for the event. So hopefully people can turn out for it. It's a very, very nice facility. Thank you.
Please join me now in a moment of silence as we remember those Grotonians who have passed since we last convened. Please rise and welcome to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance one of our newest officers in the Groton Police Department, Canine Officer Bain, and his partner, Veteran Officer Greg Stewart. Let's hope he doesn't find anything here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Thank you, Officer Stewart and Canine Bain. The Chair has determined that the warrant has been duly posted and will entertain a motion to waive the reading of the warrants. It has been moved and seconded that we waive the reading of the warrants. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The reading of the warrant is waived. Article 1, Mr. Riley.
I move that the sum of $3,195 be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Fund, free cash, for the payment of the following bills of prior fiscal year. A1R Jobs, $150, and Waste Zero, $3,045, the total being $3,195.
Article 1 has been moved and seconded, Mr. Riley. Do you have an explanation?
These are bills that were, that came in after the last fiscal year that were owed $150. This A1R Job was the name of the company, and that's exactly what it was. Waste Zero were for the trash bags at the transfer facility. The bill was misplaced and needed to be paid. Funds were received for the sale of those trash bags after we received them. So we need to pay these bills left over from the last fiscal year, the sum of $3,195.
Are there any questions on Article 1? Because it's paying bills from a prior fiscal year, it has a four-fifths majority requirement. All those in favor of Article 1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 1 passes by a unanimous vote and therefore achieves a four-fifths majority. Article 2, Mr. Deegan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everyone. I move to amend the fiscal 2020 operating budget as adopted under Article 4 of the April 29th, 2019 Spring Town Meeting as follows. Each line item to be considered as a separate appropriation for the purposes voted, general government, by increasing the general government appropriation from $2,086,103 to $2,096,103, so as to increase Line Item 1052, Town Accountant Expenses, by $10,000 from $34,056 to $44,056, and to transfer the sum of $10,000 from the Excess and Deficiency Fund, free cash, to fund said increase. Protections of personal, I'm sorry, protections of persons and property, by increasing the protection of persons and property appropriation from $4,358,41 to $4,399,782, so as to increase Line Item 1312, Fire Department Expenses, by $37,741, and from $174,700 to $212,441, and increase Line Item 1350, Emergency Management Agency Salary, by $4,000 from $0 to $4,000, and to transfer the sum of $37,741 from the Excess and Deficiency Fund, free cash, and further to raise and appropriate from tax levy and other general revenues of the town the sum of $4,000 to fund said increases. Debt service, by increasing the debt service appropriation from $1,607,259 to $1,677,652, so as to increase Line Item 2007, Short Term Debt Interest, Town, by $70,393 from $13,000 to $83,393, and to raise and appropriate from tax levy and other general revenues of the town the sum of $70,393 to fund said increase.
Article 2 has been moved and seconded, Mr. Deegan.
So, there's a lot of words there, and I'll try and explain to you what it means. Under the general government portion, the $10,000 increase is an IT upgrade for the Town Accountant's Office for getting software that is newer and technologically better and will serve the public better. Under protection of persons and property, and again, that's coming from free cash, because that is more or less a one-time expense to that upgrade. Under the protections of persons and property, we have 11 new recruits to the Call Fire Department. That's a wonderful thing to have. It's the biggest class we've had in a long time. But in order to fulfill the needs of the town for those recruits, we have to provide turnout gear and the required equipment so these firefighters will stay safe. So the $37,741, because it's a one-time expense for the turnout gear, would be funded from free cash. The $4,000 that's referenced is for the Emergency Management Agency Salary. Our fire chief serves as our emergency management director. Stipulated within his contract, there was a $4,000 stipend as part of that contract. That is a reoccurring expense year over year. Therefore, reoccurring expenses are not funded from free cash, but we want to do that from tax levy capacity, so that's how that is being done. And then the final issue to discuss is the debt service. When we approved the roof for the library and we approved the new DPW facility, the Town took out something called a ban, which is a bond anticipation note. It's a short-term borrowing mechanism. There's interest associated with that. The interest that is associated with that is the $70,393. In order to fund that, that is some tax levy capacity, and we have chosen that avenue. In February of 2021, we will permanently bond those projects, and that is excluded debt, but it still raises the tax levy, and it's outside of the normal budget cycle. So, there's an explanation that hopefully answers any questions, but I'm happy to answer any further ones.
Floor is now open for debate. Are there comments, questions? Article 2 requires a majority vote. Seeing no one rise to ask any questions, all those in favor of Article 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 2 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 3, Mr. Orkut.
I move the sum of $150,000 be transferred from the Water Enterprise Fund surplus to the fiscal year 2020 Water Enterprise Department Budget for General Expenses.
Article 3 has been moved and seconded, Mr. Orkut.
This transfer is for engineering consultant service related to our manganese mitigation. It pays for our alternative analysis and matrix in our compliance plan. It will pay for water quality testing and piloting down at the Beddick facility and a conceptual design plan.
Are there questions or comments on Article 3? Seeing no one rise, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 3 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 4, Mr. Gominer.
I move that Article 4 be indefinitely postponed.
A motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 4, Mr. Gominer.
Um, we don't need to transfer any money.
Okay. That's sufficient. A motion to indefinitely postpone does not suppress debate. The meeting may still discuss the article if it so chooses. A yes vote will dispose of Article 4 with no action taken, and we will move on to Article 5. A no vote leaves Article 4 open on the main, for a new main motion and a debate. Are there any questions or comments on Article 4 and the motion to indefinitely postpone? All those in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 4 is postponed by unanimous votes. That, by the way, is the first of five motions to indefinitely postpone we expect tonight. Article 6, Mr. Deegan. No, I'm sorry, Article 5. Getting ahead of myself.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. I move that the sum of $500,000 be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Fund, free cash, to be added to the sum already on deposit in the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Article 5 has been moved and seconded, Mr. Deegan.
So our Capital Stabilization Fund is used to fund items that the Town purchases as part of our five-year capital plan. Every year we have requests, and typically the requests exceed the amount that's in the fund. There's currently $171,958 left in this fund, and after free cash is certified each fall, because of the previous Town Meeting spending for funding the capital plan from last spring, we find ourselves short on money. In order to fund the plan, we need to get that level up, and we like to keep the remaining balance in the Capital Stabilization Fund at approximately $200,000. We're a little under that right now. So by adding that half million dollars, we would be able to proceed with the capital plan that's in place and be able to, be able to fund the things that are brought forward by the Town Manager in accordance with those plans. Currently, we have $900,000 anticipated for requests for next spring's Town Meeting. However, the Town Manager, working with the Finance Committee and the Select Board, intend to trim that down to half a million dollars. Therefore, the half a million dollars that's being requested will suffice, and I hope you support it.
Any questions or comments on Article 5? Article 5 would require a majority vote. Seeing no one rise to speak, I will call the question. All those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 5 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 6, Mr. Geiger.
I move that Article 6 be indefinitely postponed.
Motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 6, Mr. Geiger.
I'm going to ask the Town Manager to provide an explanation.
Town Manager, Mr. Haddad.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Our financial plan calls, our financial policies, rather, call for our stabilization fund to have a balance of 5% of our anticipated operating budget. We put this article on the warrant each year just to make sure we're able to do that and meet that obligation. Due to interest earned in our stabilization account, we do have a 5% in there, and we do not need to spend the money here. Thank you.
Again, a motion to indefinitely postpone does not suppress debates. Are there any questions or comments on Article 6? A motion to indefinitely postpone requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 6 is indefinitely postponed by a unanimous vote. Article 7, Ms. Pine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the sum of $261,000 be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Fund, free cash, to be added to the sum already on deposit in the Groton Unstable Regional School District Capital Stabilization Fund.
Article 7 has been moved and seconded, Ms. Pine.
I will just say that both the Select Board and the Finance Committee have unanimously supported this. The explanation is in your materials. This is to fund capital, the capital budget for the school district, which we anticipate meeting $475,000, and if we put $261,000 into it, we will have the right amount of money.
Are there any questions or comments on Article 7? It requires a majority vote. Seeing no one rise, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 7 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 8, Ms. Pine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the sum of $15,000 be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Fund, free cash, to be expended by the Town Manager for the engineering and installation of lighted crosswalk signage and all costs related and associated thereto at the crosswalk located at the Groton Unstable Middle School on Main Street.
Article 8 has been moved and seconded, Ms. Pine.
Yes, both the Select Board and the Finance Committee voted unanimously in favor of this article. So this article is to place one of the crosswalks with the flashing lights out here in front of the schools. We could not include this location in the grant, the complete streets grant that paid for the ones that we put through the center of town, because this part of Route 19 is managed by the state, not by us, and the state respectfully declined to pay for a flashing crosswalk. So we, the Select Board, believed that we should have one, and that's why we have to fund it ourselves.
Are there questions or comments on Article 8? Seeing none, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 8 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 8 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 9, Ms. Pine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that Article 9 be indefinitely postponed.
Motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 9, Ms. Pine.
So this was in, in, to cover potential costs associated with a bid for a sprinkler system in the Prescott School. Unfortunately, no bids were received at all, so we don't have that problem.
A motion to indefinitely postpone does not suppress debate. Are there any questions or comments on Article 9? Seeing none, the Chair will call the vote. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 9 is indefinitely postponed by unanimous votes. Article 10, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to raise and appropriate from the tax levy and other general revenues of the town the sum of $21,600 to be expended by the Town Manager for the purpose of starting the cyclical inspection process of inspecting every property in town within the Department of Revenue's five-year period guidelines. Said inspections to commence in the spring of 2020 and to continue every year thereafter.
Article 10 has been moved and seconded, Mr. Riley.
The Select Board voted 4 to 1 with Mr. Deegan voting against this. The FinCom voted unanimously. The state requires us to inspect all the properties in the town in a five-year period. This money would, is $21,600, would be doing one-fifth every year, and this is, we consider an operational item.
Are there questions or comments on Article 10? Seeing none, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 10 passes by a majority votes. Article 11, Ms. Menugian.
I move that the sum of $15,000 be transferred from the Excess and Deficiency Fund, free cash, to be expended by the Town Manager for the purpose of retaining consultants and engineers to assist the Town in developing a stormwater funding strategy and all costs associated and related thereto to comply with Massachusetts Small Municipal Separate Stormwater Sewer System General Permit, MS4.
Article 11 has been moved and seconded, Ms. Menugian.
So this is a state requirement. This amount of money will allow the Town to bring in an engineer to assess what, what needs to be done, and more importantly, how we will raise the, the money needed to pay for it.
Are there questions under Article 11? Questions or comments? The floor is now open. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article 11 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 12, Mr. Geiger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to enact a new charter, correction, a new chapter 200 of the Towns of, Town of Groton, general bylaws entitled "Single-Use Plastic Bags with an Effective Date of July 1, 2020," as printed in the warrant.
Article 12 has been moved and seconded, Mr. Geiger.
The, the purpose of this bylaw goes like this. The goal is to eliminate these, everybody knows what they are, to reduce our use of these, but to make use of them, and to move to reusable bags. That's the essence of what this is about. The purpose of the bylaw is to promote the use of reusable bags by reducing the number of paper bags and eliminating the use of thin film, single-use plastic checkout bags distributed in the Town of Groton. Reducing the use of the paper bags and eliminating the use of the thin film, single-use plastic bags through a combined effort by citizens and businesses will have a positive impact on our environment, including but not limited to reducing waste and unnecessary strains on recycling sources, resources, minimizing litter, reducing the carbon footprint of Groton, protecting our ponds, lakes, and waterways, avoiding the waste of finite natural resources, protecting land and water-based small animals, and preserving the unique natural beauty of our town.
Are there comments or questions on Article 12? Yes, sir. Please proceed to a microphone if you wish to comment. Yes, sir, down front.
I'm short. I'm Greg. These plastic bags are produced by using ethane. Ethane is a gas that is burnt off in the production of our home heating gases because it burns too hot. So we can either recapture the carbon that's being released on the burning of this, or we can sequence it into plastic bags. That's a start. The article says that these are single-use bags. That is fake news. These bags are used repeatedly by all of us. We use them to line our waste baskets. We use them to pick up our dog poo. We use them to take over to people's homes when we don't want to remember to bring the bags back because we drank all the wine that was in the other bag in our other hand. Canada did a study, Ontario, as to the frequency of reuse, and it was 40.2% of these bags are reused multiple times. So when we take these over to our friend's house and leave them because we drank the wine in them, they do the same thing until the bags disintegrate. These bags, our paper bags, aren't as durable as the plastic ones. To produce our paper bags, it takes four times more water than our plastic ones to produce them. It produces 3.2 times more greenhouse gases being emitted than does our plastic ones. It releases 2.7 times more acid gases, and really, I know there are people who are worried about CO2 in the atmosphere. You should really be more concerned with acid discharge into the atmosphere. It also takes, so these, you can put 2 million bags in one truck. These, for 2 million bags, takes seven trucks. So again, if you're looking at your carbon footprint, contemplate how much, how much you're using, if you've got seven trucks versus the one truck. Canada also has a very good recycling program for these bags. I know they have some problems with us. We need to update what we do. But these bags, according to Canada, they recycle 33% of these, so they are still able to do that. Thailand put a ban on plastic bags, and they had to retake that off because the landfill was being overfilled by paper. Just, again, remember, one truck for 2 million bags, seven trucks for 2 million bags. I don't mind whether you want to use these or the recyclable, or the bags that you carry into your home that are reusable. We have lots of those. My wife's back car is filled with them, and when we go to Costco, that's reused. I do object to not having a choice as to what I feel is I do object to not having a choice as to what I feel is the best for our globe. I don't think that this article does a good thing for our little fishbowl of a globe that we have. And this country is built on choice, freedom of choice, and I think it's just fine that whoever wants to use these bags and wants to use the reusable bags to do that, I do object highly that you try to take my choice away as to what I think is best for our planet, and I don't think that this bill is good for our planet. So, thank you very much. Peace, goodwill, good health be with you all. As for love, may you reap 100 times what you sow. May you sow well, and thank you very much for your time.
In the back, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Allen would like to be recognized.
Yes, Ms. Allen.
Are we, is the town planning on giving people bags to use instead of the plastic bags?
Mr. Geiger.
No, but there are organizations that are available to help with that. There's a person who gave us samples of bags made out of old t-shirts. They were called teabags, and they're available here in town. That was somebody here in town who brought that into the select board. I believe the senior center, or now called the center, is also planning on helping make bags with, that are reusable and have handles available to individuals who go to that location.
Thank you.
Mr. Deegan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, I love my single-use plastic bags, but just because I like my single-use plastic bags doesn't mean that I have to use them. There's alternatives, it's moderation, and you need to think well beyond what I like and what each one of you may like, and what's good for the environment, what's good for the animals that have no voice, what's good for the sea creatures, what's good for the food that we ingest. And when you see some of the studies on the food and the ocean populations that are filled with plastic and fish that have plastic in them, turtles and other sea animals that are being choked out because we like to use our plastic bags, that just isn't right. So, for that reason, as much as I like my plastic bags, thinking about the future, I hope you'll support this. That's the first part of this. But moving forward, if we eliminate single-use plastic bags today, what's next? Well, there's your Dunkin' Donuts Styrofoam cup, there's your plastic cup, there's your plastic straw, there's your clamshell box, whether it's made out of plastic or styrofoam. There's the box you get from Filios, which has your delicious meal in it, which is made out of plastic. So, before we piecemeal this together, moving forward to the future, and each town meeting, try and eliminate one product, I urge the Board of Health, working with the recycling committee, if you're going to consider banning other products, do it in one fell swoop and come up with an alternative that works the business owner, using a product that is sustainable to the environment and to the public. So I hope you do support this. Thank you.
In the back, yes, sir.
Hi, Chris Colton from Acorn Path. So, my first question is, my understanding was that the fall time meeting was still supposed to be for like the first 10 or 11 things, you know, quick cleanup things. A bylaw change, it seems to be something that should be at the spring town meeting when there's much better representation. I'd like to know why this didn't get done then? Why are we trying to kind of slide this through, or what?
Mr. Geiger.
We are not trying to drive it through. The people that are here will make a decision, and that's what we'll go with. We are putting it on a track that it's on now because it doesn't take effect until the 1st of July. We need to give people time to get prepared, use up inventory that they have, and order replacements. So that's why it's put together this way. Otherwise, we're just kicking the can down the road, another six months and another six months. Many of our neighboring towns already have this in place, and I think it behooves us for our citizens, for our children that are coming, that we be serious about doing what we can to help our environmental conditions.
I don't dispute making good decisions. That's always the right thing. As I said, though, a bylaw change seems to me is a much more major thing than the minor town meeting. I would like to propose a postponement until the spring town meeting.
Are you making a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 12?
Not indefinitely, just until spring town meeting.
Well, we would have to indefinitely postpone it tonight, and then work would have to be done to put it onto the warrant at the next town meeting. No town meeting can assign work to a future town meeting.
I see. Then I would make the motion to postpone indefinitely, then.
So the motion has been made to indefinitely postpone Article 12. Is there a second? The motion has been made to indefinitely, and seconded to indefinitely postpone Article 12. It does not suppress debate, so we will continue debating.
Okay. If I may, or do you want to have somebody else? Because I did have some comments.
So why don't you finish up?
Okay. So as far as if we do move forward on the vote, I think there is, you can call it fake news, misrepresentation, or whatever, but it is extremely easy to recycle these items. Most, all the major users of these items have a container as you walk in and out that they will take as many as you want. We, as the other gentleman, use them for multiple, many reasons, and when we have too many, we merely drop them off at Shaw's, Walmart, or any other place. Rather than take the quick and easy Band-Aid approach, which is somewhat what Selecton was mentioning there, is why not try to get people to make the right decision? It's not a bad product. I don't dispute, it's flimsy and thin, it should be made a little bit better or whatever, but the issue is to get them to be put back where they should be when you're done with them, and it's a simple thing to do. Why didn't we consider that as a bylaw?
Mr. Haddad, or Mr. Geiger?
And finally, those reusable bags that I see at the stores are made out of plastic also. Thank you.
Mr. Haddad.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to address the point about town meeting. In 2008, when the town changed the charter, they created two annual town meetings, one in the spring, one in the fall. There is nothing prohibiting the select board from putting this particular article on this warrant, whether it be in the spring or the fall. Depending on the article on the warrant drives attendance at a meeting. We had a fall town meeting when we were talking about a sewer system in Lost Lake, and there were 600 people here. So there is nothing prohibiting the select board from putting an article on the fall town meeting warrant. Again, we have two annual town meetings, one in the spring, one in the fall.
In the back, yes, sir. Mr. Weber, I believe.
Good evening. It's loud. I'm Jason Weber, current chair for the Groton Board of Health. Two parts, I guess, tonight, first for the board and then just first for myself. So with regard to the motion, the board voted at our last meeting to support this. Probably not surprising. Very good point. We're in support of the original motion, Article 12, not in support of postponement specifically. So that's the board's position. I can go into the discussion if anyone cares. Now, a bunch of claims and arguments were brought up. I'd like an opportunity to address those. I'll try and be concise, but there's a lot, and I think as adults, we should attempt to deal with the facts. So, statistics. Number one, we all live in the United States, not Canada, although I think some of us might prefer to live in Canada these last couple of years, but that's a whole nother thing. So when we look at statistics, it's really important to look at statistics from the United States and not Canada because they're different. The average lifespan of a quote-unquote "single-use" bag, which I would agree is a misnomer since in my house, they always get at least two uses, nonetheless, average lifespan is 15 minutes. Average amount of time spent degrading in the environment, many thousands of times that. When they degrade, they don't biodegrade, they polymer degrade. And any chemicals, carcinogens, which are present in those bags and others are leached into the environment as they degrade. So I think a responsible manufacturer might want to take that into account, but in any event, the comparison that's made against paper bags, we heard a big number of 2 million, well, that's not really the point. Instead of substituting paper bags for these single-use bags, I think the goal would be, as Mr. Geiger pointed out, a better solution would be reusable bags. That's called the false equivalency. It's also called a, well, it doesn't matter. So that's paper bags, not really a valid comparison point, 2 million or otherwise. Size is irrelevant, density is irrelevant, same reasons. Thailand had problems with their landfill, apparently. Well, we're not Thailand. They also perhaps didn't make alternatives available, which is a problem. Choice was brought up. So it is a fact of economics that choice works really well. You know, our economy is pretty good. However, choice and markets only work correctly when all the information and all the externalities are priced in. The only reason these bags are free today is because none of the externalities are priced in. When you get a free, single-use paper bag, you are passing on the cost of your use of that product to future generations. You're not paying to dispose of it, you're not paying to recycle it, you're not paying hardly a fraction of the cost. So choice, yes. Markets, absolutely, but let's factor it all in. There's some interesting research about what happens when you have to pay for these things, by the way. That's worth looking at if you're looking for an alternative to just an outright ban. Can't read my own writing. Oh, Mr. Deegan, thank you for your comments. You said that this should not be done in a piecemeal fashion. I kind of agree with that. On the other hand, perfect is the enemy of the good. And so unless there is some tragic flaw with this incremental improvement, I see no reason not to support it. We should definitely work with business owners, though. We should definitely ensure that whatever ban, if you want to say, or regulations come out are comprobable and do not impose undue burdens. That's completely reasonable. Oh, and then the last point here was about how other regions slash countries do a good job recycling and how easy it is. And I think there's some conflicting data on that. A large percentage of these bags that make it to a recycling facility end up back out in the wilderness, degrading, injuring wildlife, contaminating the environment, because it turns out they flap around in the wind and they don't do well on trucks when trucks are in motion, et cetera, et cetera. So it's great to say these things, that we should do better, that it's easy, but until there is facts on the ground that offer an alternative, I'm going to go for the best thing we've got, and I think right now that's getting rid of these bags. Thank you.
In the back, yes, sir.
Local resident here, I just have a couple of easy-to-understand statistics that sort of go there. These are statistics from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. We've got some specific things here, but 100 billion single-use bags are discarded every year in the US. 3.6 billion bags are tossed in Massachusetts alone. Plastic bags contribute to global warming, 1.6 billion is oil used to make them. Approximately 93% to 96% of plastic bags are not recycled anywhere. Massachusetts retailers spend $150 million per year on plastic bags. Guess who pays for that money? And there is no evidence, according to the Massachusetts Municipal Association, that businesses lose money because of a ban on plastic bags. Those are simple statistics. Thank you.
The gentleman standing along the wall, are you in line to speak?
I am.
Please, one of you please speak. I did see them before this gentleman, so. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Diana Keeney. I am on the recycling board, and Mr. Geiger did come present his proposal to us. We didn't officially vote, we were supporting as individuals of the proposal. But the other thing I wanted to point out, the gentleman who gave the statistics, sort of the negativity of all this, if you think about someone going to the grocery store with, only coming back with plastic bags, who comes home with less than like eight bags unless you're going for one or two items? There's no way you use eight bags in your trash barrels and all that. It's just, you may use two, maybe three, but the rest end up hopefully getting recycled at the grocery store, but it's still not ideal, and I, with the recycling committee, recommend this. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bob Lottz from Indian Hill Road, Groton. Clarification, we're currently, the question before us is the postponement, is that correct?
Yes, sir. There are two motions on the floor. The first we will deal with is a motion to indefinitely postpone.
I move the question.
And then if that, I'm sorry?
I move the question.
Okay. Do you move?
To postpone.
Do you wish, you wish to move the question to indefinitely postpone?
I do.
Do you wish to then move the question that follows it? If the motion to indefinitely postpone fails, we still need to deal with the main motion under Article 12. So do you wish to suppress all debate and go straight to all the votes?
No, I simply moved to indefinitely postpone, I mean to
Move the question to indefinitely postpone.
To move the question on postponement, so that we can deal with it.
You have a motion to move the question, and the question being the motion to indefinitely postpone. Do I have a second? It has been moved and seconded to indefinitely post, or to move the question on the motion to indefinitely postpone. A motion to move the question suppresses all debate. We will then, we vote on whether to move the question. If that passes, we will then vote on the motion to indefinitely postpone. If the motion to indefinitely postpone passes, we would move on to Article 13. If the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 12 fails, we would continue debating Article 12. Is that clear? Let me try it again. We have on the floor a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 12. The gentleman has risen and made a motion to move the question. All that means is we suppress debate and we go directly to the vote on whether to indefinitely postpone Article 12. If the motion to move the question passes, we vote right away. If the motion to move the question does not pass, we continue debating. Is that clear? Okay. A motion to move the question, because it suppresses debate, requires a two-thirds majority. The chair will call the vote. All those in favor of the motion to move the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion to move the question passes by a two-thirds majority. We now move directly to the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 12. If you vote in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 12, we will then move directly to Article 13. If you vote against the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 12, debate will continue on Article 12, and we will then eventually vote on Article 12 in whatever form it may take. Is that clear? The question before you now is on the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 12. The motion to indefinitely postpone requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The noes have it. The motion to indefinitely postpone fails by a majority vote. We now continue debating Article 12. Is there other questions or comments on Article 12? Yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, sir, over there. I'll go with you first, and then we'll go over here.
Hi, my name's Greg Bun, Martins Pond Road.
Hi, my name's Greg Bun, Martins Pond Road. Two issues, some of the data regarding plastic waste. Some EPA estimates put plastic bags only at 12% of all the plastic bag waste. And again, the Environmental Protection Agency estimates that between 1% and .5% is the total use, or the total waste of all plastic bags. So each side, I know, has been citing data and putting data back and forth. The second issue I have is the way the bill is being implemented. This is being implemented as a fine. My philosophy is we should incentivize the recycling of the plastic bags. We do have a transfer station in town that operates quite efficiently. You've heard other individuals cite the fact that the lack of recycling of plastic bags is the issue. So I would like to see a bill that actually incentivizes citizens for actually recycling and using the transfer station appropriately. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Are you ready to speak? Go ahead. Yep.
Hello, my name is Julia Sanders, and I just, I live on Crosswinds Drive. I just moved here from Cambridge, Massachusetts, and we've been using the multiple-use bags for a while now. For the last eight years, I've been using these same 10 bags that cost me 10 cents each. And once a week, every Sunday after I'm finished with my groceries, I wipe them down, and it really hasn't affected my pocketbook that much. And I just want to say, coming from a place that does use them, you get used to it. I moved to Groton because I wanted the quiet and peacefulness, and I also love the fact that close to 50% of this town is these beautiful forests and public land, so I'm just, I don't have statistics this evening. I'm just talking from my personal experience. The bags are going very well, and I think, once we get over that little hiccup of spending $2 on these bags and you treat them well, it is possible, and it's great for our future. Thank you.
Over here. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Stacy Chilcoe, Chickapie Row. I've worked in environmental education for 35 years. I'm actually the education director at the Nash River Watershed Association. But I'm speaking also as a Groton, really as a Groton resident. This town is a town that has embraced the environment in many ways. We have some of the most spectacular environmental protection going on with land. We have an incredible river, and we are people that really care about the environment. Changing our attitude toward plastic bags is one very basic step that many towns around us have taken. And I think it is not hard for our town to step up and be the environmental organ, environmental town that we can be and that we pride ourselves in to look at this. And yes, each plastic bag that is made is a pollutant in many ways, both in its making and in what we do with it. There are all sorts of industries coming up with cornstarch bags and other ways in which we can resolve the challenges that people may think they're going to have. But getting used to carrying your bags is not really that big a deal, and many of the towns around us have been very successful at that. So I'm really surprised that there's such negative action in a town that is so environmentally focused, and I really encourage people to vote for this. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, thanks. This is Stuart Schulman, also Chickapie Row, as it turns out. I, you know, I do support this, and I always have, but I kind of have a question, which is to say that we talk about checkout plastic bags, and I'm thinking if I buy, say, a bunch of string beans in the grocery store, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do with that if there's no plastic bags, or like, you know, I like watermelon. I eat a lot of watermelon. If I, if it gets kind of wet, you know, it's kind of messy and stuff, and I don't know, it would really be nice to have a plastic bag to put that in once in a while, and I would get rid of it appropriately as well, of course, but, but I'm just wondering how the things other than checkout bags will be handled. Thank you.
Mr. Geiger.
Bags other than checkout bags are excluded. So if you go to the store and your hamburger is already covered in a, I'm not sure I like this, but in a styrene-made little platform, you're okay. If you go to the produce area and put three or four great New England apples in a bag, you're okay. It's the bag that's used when you check out for you to carry what you picked up at the store to your home or wherever you're headed with it. I'll also point out, since this has come up in several of the meetings I've had with people, are the, are the bags that are used for you to take your trash to the transfer center prohibited by this proposal? They are not. They are not. Those bags are much more easy to recycle because they're much thicker. The proposed bylaw does allow plastic bags, but they have to be 4 mil or thicker, because you'll get at least 25 uses out of them or more, and they can be recycled in a much more efficient way than these very flimsy white or green plastic bags. Does that help?
Yes, ma'am, in the back.
I just want a quick clarification. Someone mentioned about recycling the plastic bags at the recycling, at the transfer station. They do not have that capability. They have to be brought to the grocery stores.
And then standing against the wall, we have, I'm guessing, Ms. Ellen.
That's correct.
Yes, Miss Ellen.
I move the question.
A motion has been made to move the question. Is there a second? A motion has been made and seconded to move the question, requires a two-thirds majority. If you vote in favor of moving the question, we will move directly to the vote on the main motion under Article 12. If you vote against moving the question, we will continue debate. On the motion to move the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion to move the question passes by a two-thirds majority. On the main question under Article 12, requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article 12 passes by a majority vote. Article 13, Ms. Menugian.
I move that Article 13 be indefinitely postponed.
A motion has been made to indefinitely postpone Article 13. It has been seconded. Ms. Menugian.
So this was in here to utilize grant funding toward this purchase. We did not receive the grant, so we are postponing this.
A motion to indefinitely postpone does not suppress debate. Are there any questions or comments on Article 13? Seeing none, the motion to indefinitely postpone requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 13 is indefinitely postponed by unanimous votes. Article 14, Mr. Geiger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You'll have to bear with me, this one's a little longer than some of the ones we've been through. I moved to see if the town will vote to amend Section 71-1 of the Town of Groton bylaws entitled Funds Established by Inserting the Following Amendment Establishing Two New Revolving Funds to Follow After the Words Access for Persons with Disabilities Revolving Fund.
Sorry, Mr. Geiger, that's not the motion that I, the chair, has. So let's hit the rewind button. Article 14, Mr. Geiger.
Well, I moved to amend, well, at least we got the section right. I moved to amend Section 71-1 of the Town of Groton bylaws entitled Funds Established as Printed in the Warrant and further vote to amend Section 71-2 entitled Limitations on or Increases in Expenditures as Printed in the Warrant.
Article 14 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Geiger.
The article creates two new revolving funds. One will allow the Department of Public Works Director to collect fees from municipalities who utilize the new glass pulverizing plant at the transfer station, and then expend those fees for the purpose of upkeep, of general upkeep and maintenance of that equipment. The second one will allow the Council on Aging Director to collect fees from individuals who utilize the new fitness equipment at the, at the center, the senior center, and then expend those fees for the purpose of general upkeep and maintenance on that equipment. It is expected that the fund balance in this account will eventually accumulate to also cover replacement of equipment as this becomes necessary.
Are there any questions or comments on Article 14? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 14 passes by a majority vote. Article 15, Mr. Riley.
I move pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2 in the revolving fund bylaw to set the fiscal year 2020 spending limits on the following revolving funds as follows. The transfer station glass, $10,000. The senior center fitness equipment, $10,000.
Article 15 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Riley.
So this just sets up the spending limits of the two funds that were created in Article 14.
Are there any questions on Article 15? Questions or comments? The floor is open. Seeing none, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article 15 passes by a unanimous vote. Article 16, Mr. Geiger.
I did so well on the last one, they thought I should have another try. This one I can't mess up. Mr. Moderator, I move that this be indefinitely postponed.
As a motion has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone, Article 16, Mr. Geiger. Does he have an explanation? You don't have to give one, if you choose.
The taking of a public way to turn it into a town road is a significantly involved process, which first begins with engineering analysis to conclude that the road has actually been built to the specifications the town requires for something to be called a town road and cared for as a town road. In the case of Amelia Way, the developer built the property, and the road that runs into the property is actually today owned in, by additions to their lots, the houses that live or exist on the road. So until the road is in a state where the town can take legal ownership of it, which means people who have ownership of the road now have to give that up in order for the road to be accepted. And we do not have the acknowledgements from the eight families that live on that road that they're ready to reallocate that road so that they don't own it, the town would own it. That's where we are tonight.
A motion to indefinitely postpone does not suppress debate. Are there any questions or comments on Article 16? No questions?
Somebody in the back.
Oh, yeah, you have a question? Yes, sir, come on down. Come to a microphone?
I don't think I'm a voter.
Okay. Sir, are you a voter of this town?
Uh, no, but I'm responsible for the roadway.
Could you introduce yourself to me, please?
Sure. My name's Stephen Kelly from Grand Coast Capital. I'm responsible for the roadway as of now.
Okay. Sir, in order for a non-voter to address the meeting, I need to get the permission of the meeting.
Okay.
If the, if there are no objections, the chair will allow this gentleman to address the meeting. Hearing no objections, the chair grants the floor to you, sir.
Hi, I was just wondering, have the residents on the roadway been notified that, have they been asked for their permission to grant the roadway over to the town?
They absolutely have.
When was, when did that take place?
I can't tell you the day, but we were expecting them to turn those into us today, and that didn't happen.
Okay, because I was not made aware of that. I was just asked by the local town council just last week for deeds, which we provided. And our attorney followed up with them last week and has yet to receive a response on what we needed to do to get this clarified. And at no point was I told that this would ever hold up this article at the town meeting.
Well, you've found out that it does, and that's why I think it's wise, given the confusion, that we postpone this indefinitely until everything gets sorted out, the i's get dotted, the t's get crossed, and everything's in order.
But we, as owners of the road, currently have been paying for this roadway for the past two, three years to plow it through the winter. So is the town willing to reimburse us for this postponement for the plowing and expenses that it takes to get it through the winter?
I cannot respond for the town, but I can tell you, I'm not prepared to do that.
Okay, well, I wish we would have a little more, this is actually the second time this has happened to me, actually the third time, where I had submitted the roadway for acceptance, and at the, this is the furthest we've gotten, but I've been turned down at the past two meetings for some sort of last-minute item like this. And I was at the select board meeting a month ago when this was approved, and this was never made mention, and the planning department told me that the former town council never asked for this to be clarified until after town meeting, and this is the first time the new town council has ever done this before, and this is the first time it's been asked for ahead of town meeting.
Mr. Deegan.
So to respond to your concerns, when the select board voted a couple weeks back, we voted in favor of the layout of the road as presented by you folks, and that's what we did, but we bring that to town meeting for acceptance. The problem that developed with this road was, the normal process that the planning board goes through is they get a bond, they create lots on a subdivision road, those lots are developed and ultimately sold, the deed's recorded to the homeowner. But the fee ownership of the roadway maintains with the developer until said time that the layout is done and town meeting accepts it. In this case, when this roadway was created by the developer, the original developer went bankrupt, went out of business, foreclosed some type of action, and then another developer took over. At some juncture, the normal process got broken, and the residents that lived in Amelia Way took fee ownership of the portion of the road as it butted their property. As a result, there's no clear access for the deed for the town to take unless each individual homeowner does a release. Town council is the person that the select board refers to, as well as town meeting for legal advice. And the legal advice is, how can we turn this road over to town meeting for a vote without having the releases in place? So that's the conundrum we find ourselves in, therefore the select board earlier tonight reversed its position because we didn't have those documents in place to recommend a town meeting to indefinitely postpone. That's the best answer I can provide you.
But you didn't make anyone aware of that until just now. So this was done outside of a public forum. You had voted in a public forum to accept the roadway, and then you did it behind closed doors to not accept the roadway.
No, sir. No, sir.
It's not true.
We had an open public meeting tonight at 6:30 that was duly posted. During that meeting, when we did not have the documentation as requested by town council, we took a vote, and that vote was to recommend indefinitely postponing. As a matter of fact, we reconsidered the original vote to allow up to the time of this article for those deed rele, excuse me, those releases to be turned over as promised to town council. Town council is here, if you want to ask that of him, but nothing was done behind closed doors.
Is that Paul?
Paul Duransis.
Paul, you had said that the town has approximately 120 days after the approval to get this documentation and take the roadway back. Is there a reason why we can't approve this and, subject to the 120 days to take the roadway, get the signatures before that time?
Town council, Mr. Duransis.
Good evening. First, I want to say that I received a phone call from a lawyer, Bruce Miller. He and I reviewed this whole issue, and he assured me that they would have sign-offs from the property owners before tonight's vote.
When was that phone call?
Mr. Kelly, let Mr. Duransis speak without interrupting him, please.
That was this morning. He said he didn't envision a problem at all with this. He said he didn't envision a problem at all with this. So at the meeting referenced here at 6:30, the board voted to allow Attorney Miller to deliver these documents up until this very moment of this vote. And if you have the documents, I believe the board would reverse its vote and approve this road.
Obviously, I don't have the document since I did not get any notification from anyone here or yourself and I didn't get a chance to speak with Bruce Miller today. I sent you an email this morning asking you for an update. I didn't realize you spoke with Bruce Miller. I only sent you an email after Bruce had sent you an email last week that you never responded to.
Mr. Kelly, you've made your points. I appreciate that. We don't need to get into the nitty-gritty back and forth on emails and telephone calls. Do you have any other points to make? Otherwise, we'll go on to Mr. Weber, who's behind you.
I'd like the 120 days. I'd like to ask for the 120-day, I guess it would be a leeway to approve this and then within 120 days we get the signatures, which is what town council laid out in his original email to myself and Bruce Miller last week.
Mr. Geiger, do you have anything else to add?
I'm only going to say that that's not acceptable to me and it's not acceptable to the select board. You must deal in these things far more often than I do and I'm surprised that the unpreparedness would go through this.
Mr. Geiger, please, let's avoid making personal assumptions or anything like that.
The planning department and the town manager have told me the last two times this was going to be approved with absolutely no problem, so I don't do this very often. This is the first time I've ever done this, as a matter of fact. And I'm shocked that I literally came here with a book to read because I was told that this was going to pass with no problem. So I, you know, I don't understand how town council's email that stated after 120 days after town meeting is when the town would take it over and then, within the course of a day, it changed.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. So ladies and gentlemen, obviously you see there's a back and forth. The chair would just clarify that you do not have to vote to indefinitely postpone. You can vote against indefinitely postponing and someone could then make a main motion under Article 16, the text of which we would give you. That is an option. Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jason Weber, 42 Sheppel Lane, a lane which unfortunately the property owners along it own, so I sympathize with the other gentleman's emotional response. We'll say, just a quick question. I'm curious, is the town obligated to accept this road?
No.
Mr. Geiger, is that it?
No. Thank you.
In the back, yes, Mr. Lathrow.
I move the question. I move the question.
A motion has been made to move the question, is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to move the question. If you vote in favor of moving the question, we'll move directly to the main motion, which is to indefinitely postpone Article 16. A motion to move the question requires a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion to move the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion to move the question passes by a two-thirds majority. We now move directly to the main motion, which is a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 16. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Article 16 is indefinitely postponed by a majority vote. Article 17, Ms. Menugian.
I move to accept Mockingbird Hill Road as a public way, as recommended by the planning board and laid out by the select board and shown on a plan entitled "Roadway as Built for Mockingbird Hill Road Station 0+00 through 16+13.23 in Groton, Massachusetts, prepared by R. Wilson Associates, dated July 12, 2019, recorded with the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds and on file with the town clerk." To authorize the select board to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain such land and easements for the creation, maintenance, and operation of a public way, including but not limited to easements for access, grading, drainage, sloping, construction, and utilities in all or any portions of such way and the parcels on such way.
Article 17 has been moved and seconded. Ms. Menugian.
So this is a, similar to the last article. Here, all the pieces of the puzzle are before us. We have all the information we need. Following town meeting, the parcel that is the roadway will be turned over to the town and we will then take on responsibility for plowing, maintenance, upkeep, et cetera.
Mr. Burke, did you have a committee report?
I do, thank you.
For the planning board, Mr. Burke.
At its regular meeting on September 26, 2019, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend that the select board lay out Mockingbird Hill Road as a public way. The planning board determined that the construction of the road and installation of municipal services have been fully and satisfactorily completed by the applicant in accordance with Chapter 381, Subdivision Rules and Regulations of the Code of the Town of Groton. The planning board also approved release of the Mockingbird Hill Road Performance Bond. The DPW Highway Director provided the planning board with his concurrence that the street is ready for acceptance.
Are there any questions on Article 17? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Article 17 passes by unanimous votes. Is it kickoff time yet? The chair will accept a motion to dissolve the annual fall town meeting. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to dissolve the annual fall town meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting is dissolved.